Let's get started. Good evening and welcome to the Monday, September ninth, two thousand thirteen town me-- I mean, I'm sorry, Board of Selectments meeting. First item on the agenda is the signing of the warrant.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Seconded.
All right. Next item, I'm gonna skip over approval of minutes until they're prepared. Citizen participation, is there anybody here that would like to address the board who doesn't have a--
Yeah, I'd like to address you.
All right, hold on just a minute, I saw this gentleman's hand first. Go ahead, please come forward. Just for the benefit of everyone, if you could give your name and address.
Sure, my name is Lloyd Curry, twenty-three Simon Jive, Milford. I'm about to be here tonight, according to the open meeting law complaint rules given by the Attorney General's Office, it is appropriate that the public body be notified, and that's what I'm here to do tonight. Mr. Chairman, this is a violation that I like to describe here.
Please.
On Monday, August twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, during the town of Milford's Selectment meeting, a resident asked the board about alleged private meetings between selectmen and certain consultants and/or members of Foxwoods Casino Group. Selectman Dino Dipatolome acknowledged having direct meetings, private meetings in his residence with Sean Riordan of Tetechek, a consultant with Foxwoods. Another selectman, Brian Murray, denied having direct private meetings with any member of Foxwoods and/or its consultants, as did Board Chairman William Buckley. Allegedly, selectman Dipatolome either through direct or indirect third party to one another did communicate details of the private meeting to selectman Murray. We contend that if these communications between selectmen Dipatolome and Murray occurred, by definition of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, an illegal quorum had taken place, and the residents of Milford were intentionally deprived of information that may have influenced the decision process concerning the Milford Casino Project. We support this claim by suggesting that even with incomplete, inaccurate data, and with ever-changing size and magnitude of the overall casino project, these selectmen are ignoring the facts contrary to requiring further review and clarification of the project and are moving forward to approve a compact with Foxwoods that has not been completely and thoroughly vetted. How can this project be approved at this point in time, given the concerns of rushing to make a decision for the sake of making a decision unless communications outside the residents' privy has taken place between certain selectmen? In July two thousand eight, the selectmen held a closed-door initial meeting with David Newans, a developer of Foxwoods, to privately discuss the casinos' project. The Milford Daily News filed an open meeting complaint against the same selectmen. Upon review, the Attorney General's Office confirmed that the particular meeting did in fact violate the open meeting laws and required the selectmen to release and publish the notes and minutes of the meeting. Furthermore, after the AG's office confirmed this violation, selectman Dipatolome was quoted by the Milford Daily News as saying, "We followed the advice of Town Council Gerald Moody, and I would do it all over again." We contend that selectman Dipatolome has shown his willingness, even after proved illegal by the AG's office, to ignore the rules in meeting of the Massachusetts--
Hold on, I'm gonna stop you here. We have to stop, and I'm gonna tell you why. You're entitled, you're entitled to file anything you wish with the Attorney General's Office, and there have been public statements made by the individuals of this board, those public statements are a matter of record, you're entitled, but I'm not gonna let you continue to read having, to go beyond that scope to talk about the pros or cons of the casino agreement. As a matter of fact, normally I don't, I prefer not to have a give and take, but there are two members who were called out specifically and identified specifically in this. I don't know what conversations did or didn't take place, so I'm gonna allow, if both men would want to, and I don't think they are compelled to say anything in response, but if they wish to, they certainly can. So I'll go to the senior member, Dean, any comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, last meeting, I said I met with many residents, I did meet with Sean Riordan, glad I did it, we spent a couple hours together going over detailed information so I become, so I could become better learned of the entire process on traffic. I have never had conversations with my colleague Bill, and I've never had conversations with you about this particular project.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah. You know, when I found out that Dino met with Sean at the meeting when he said it, I didn't even know that. So you've made this inaccurate assumption, a misrepresentation, a lie about a supposed conversation between Dino and myself, and you never had the courtesy to call me and ask me whether or not I had a conversation with that man, and you just come here in a public meeting and make this accusation. And frankly, I'm offended. So, wait a minute, I'm talking, you're listening, all right? I've had it with these accusations. I didn't even know that he met with Sean until I heard it at the meeting. So in answer to your accusation, it is inaccurate, it's wrong, and it's vicious.
So--
May I respond, Mr. Chairman?
No, what I'm gonna do is end it here, I'm gonna say that you certainly have the right to file anything with the Attorney General's Office, or the Ethics Commission for that matter, who has authority over these matters, and you've heard the responses from this board, those are a matter of public record, and whether or not you have facts to support the alleged conversation between Dino and Brian is a matter for you and the Attorney General. So I'm gonna move on to the next person.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, please. Just for the benefit of the public, if you could name an address.
My name is Joseph Corsetino. Okay? I wanna clear the air on a few things over here, just real quick. I got a lot of flack back because of Dino, all right? Dino, everybody think Dino is my cousin, okay?
Hold on, hold on.
All right. I just wanna clarify--
No, no, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna clarify who's related to who. We're not gonna go there, Joseph.
All right, okay. All right, we'll go to the next one then.
You should say it right, I'm your nephew, not your cousin.
Thank you. Okay, I got that right. All right. What he does is his business, what I do is my business. I'll get to the point. I ask for some clarification, all right, on where I live, High Street, Fountain Street, West Fountain, Congress, right? They did Dillon Street down, what you call it, Fortune Boulevard. Is this what we're gonna get? My brother lives at Chapin Street, right where you live. There's a ton of traffic in that main drag, always clogged up.
Yeah.
All right. I asked the administrator to look in on this, right? What are they doing with the surveys?
I would--
I thought they had the whole survey withdrawn, what you told me.
I would tell you that for the most part, the information you received is the information you're going to get as it relates to traffic. I'm trying to think, is there anything else that you have that you're looking for other than additional traffic information?
That's exactly what I would get for, because I live two miles from where this is going, and the children come down Divertory Drive. Matter of fact, former Lieutenant Frank Bussel lives up on the drive, happened to broke his hip, unfortunately walks down, he couldn't even cross where that cross used to be, because people can park further down, but I can't park in front of my house, they don't crosswalk there.
All right, I'm not gonna--
I just want that--
reopen the discussion about who can park where, but I will say that those issues, you know, as far as people being able to cross, I think we've adequately addressed Fountain Street with the Chief of Police.
Yeah, right.
We've looked at the speed, we've looked at the speeds, we've done speed counts, we've done traffic counts.
My cousin was a former chief, he checked the speed too, so--
All right.
Look, all I wanted, right, anybody gets hurt, we'll hold you accountable.
All right. Duly noted.
We'll put it that way.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Yes, in the back? Mr. Tim, for the benefit of everybody at home--
Mike Tim, Field Bond Road here in Milford.
Mike, it's not about me, right?
It's about all of us, Dino. I'm here because I have a deep love for the town of Milford, I've lived here, although, you know, when I die, it'll say, "Milford man's father dies because I wasn't born here." I understand that, I've only been here for thirty-two years, but I have a deep affection for this town. And that's what brings me here. There's a great concern by some citizens in Milford, brought on perhaps by the speed of the process, as well as reports getting in late, a thousand-page report twenty-four hours before, et cetera, et cetera. But that's some of the concern, is that there may have been promises made, and even agreements made, with leaders of our town for jobs, legal representation, consulting contracts--
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. We're going into, yeah, we're going into a space that unless you have evidence of that, I'm not gonna let you impugn the character of the reputation of individuals involved.
I'm here to give you the concerns of people in town that I talk with.
No, you're speculating, Mike, you're speculating, and I'm not gonna get into rumor and conjecture here, because these are the reputations of individuals that live here, so I'm gonna tell you that unless you have something very direct that you wanna present to the board--
I have something very direct here, and it's within your power to dispel all of these concerns.
No, no, we are not going to let you throw out wild accusations.
I'm making no accusations.
Okay, so unless there's evidence, I'd ask you not to, not to throw out assassinations on peoples.
None whatsoever, I'm only asking all the members of the board to reaffirm--
No, no, we're not going there. So this is over, this discussion's over, it has to be over. It's not the right place to go, and it's not the right thing to do in this community.
I'll disagree with you, Bill.
Okay, fair enough. Next item on the agenda is public hearings and scheduled appointments. First one is Mango Thai Cuisine, transfer of license and pool table license.
Good afternoon, selectmen, my name's Ryan Abraham, attorney for Thai Tran.
Hi, Ryan.
How are you?
Attorney Abraham.
How are you, sir?
How are you?
Okay, why don't you just briefly go over what the, about the transfer, who's transferring from whom to whom, and what you would like, or what your client would like to do with that license?
Selectman, my client is the proposed transferee, so this is both, both a change of license holder and change of location. He's looking to, and has already executed a contract for the sale of liquor license in Milford from Mr. Kaman, actually from Mango Thai Cuisine, of which Mr. Kaman is the president. The license would be transferred to one nineteen East Main Street. That site is currently a can and bottle redemption center, it's already gone through planning board for a change of use to a pool hall and bar at that site, and it's basically been conditionally approved, there's some work that needs to be done to satisfy open space requirements, and we're in the process of getting that work performed.
Let me, let me, just as I do for, for all of these requests, I'm gonna read from a document that we go out to the various department heads and ask them to provide feedback as it relates to that. The planning commission commissioner, I'm sorry, the building commissioner has said that's an allowable use within that district, not accessible, but change of use will require, will be required for full accessibility. Town planners stated that an amended site plan is approved by the planning board on eight thirteen for bar and pool hall use. Tax collectors indicated there are no taxes due at this time, town treasurer said there are no outstanding liens. Fire chief has no objections, police chief has no objections. From the Board of Health, we've not received anything from the Board of Health, so my recommendation to this board is that anything we do this evening be pending review by the Board of Health. But having said that, is there any questions for the applicant at this time? I'll go to the members of the board.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Sir, you've come highly recommended by the chief. Can I just ask, I rode by that facility yesterday afternoon and today, it's, can you tell us renovations? Now, you're gonna be taking over the place where they sell, you can bring cans and all that, right?
Yes, sir, my name is Ty from twenty-two Church Hills. We will be moving out our cans, returning to our next, the next spot.
Yeah.
And then after that, we can renovate the area at one nineteen East Main.
How large is that, what's the square footage of that place, do you know?
It's twenty-four hundred square feet, so--
Okay. Do you know what you're planning to do in that building, the type of renovation, do you have, do you have a floor plan and all that?
Yes, sir.
Could we see that?
Just in case it wasn't clear, Mr. Tran operates, is the operator of the businesses there right now.
Yeah, yes.
The redemption center, okay.
Okay, so it seems that you're gonna have to, just looking from the outside, I haven't been on the outside, but just looking at the outside with the parking lot and all that, it seems that you're gonna have to spend some money on renovations, correct?
Yes, sir.
Move the microphone closer, so you don't have to-- What, what type of renovations, Ty?
We're gonna be breaking out the walls, make an open space, and put the new counters on, like a small counter for the bars areas, and also for the cash registers, and we're gonna be removing some pavement outside, sir, to meet the code, and then we'll be painting the areas, and the walls and stuff, so--
You're gonna sell food too?
Uh, we're not--
Bar.
We're not gonna be selling, we're selling, like, pre-cooked food that you buy from the, you know, the restaurant depot, so, and then, you know, you're gonna come, go there, bring it over there and heat it up.
Yes, and you're gonna have, you'd like to have ten pool table licenses?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and now, will you have like a bar area, a seating area also, or no?
Yes, there'll be a seating areas. It's not like a big bar, so, it's like for a place to relax, people can shoot pools and, you know, talk to friends, and, you know, et cetera, so--
Yeah, and you'll have, have you been involved in this type of business before?
No, sir, but I, back in the day, I used to shoot pools a lot, and I liked the games, and plus--
Yeah, I did too, I wasn't too good though, so maybe I could come down and-- Okay, I'm just trying to get a sense for the board members and myself, you know, like, right now, you look at it, it doesn't seem to, now, you don't own the property, right? You just own that--
Oh, we don't own the property, so--
Okay, so I think it, I think it involves a lot of, you know, sprucing up, especially the outside and the inside, because, you know, you want the business to be successful, you know, you're represented by a fine attorney, and, you know, you want it to be successful, I think, if, the more you make it nice and all that, I think you might maybe attract a, you know, higher caliber of farm. Because about fifteen, eighteen years ago, they wanted to build a, some type of a pool hall in Milford, and the police chief at that time, Chief Roberto and I went to Marlborough, we went to a couple places to check out how it was, and it, you know, it was really nice, you know, it kinda like made me say, okay, fine, I think it'll work, the type of supervision, the type of adherence, the rules and regulations and all that, so I think those are the things that you have to try to talk about, and make sure you do, so that, you know, that if the board does give you a license, you're gonna be successful, so, you know, those are the types of things that are important to me, to make it fully handicap accessible, to, you know, to make it bright, you know, you know, nice and all that, so it attracts, so it looks good for the Main Street, and, and then you'll also be successful, so that's, those are the only recommendations that--
Yes, sir.
--that I strongly recommend. Also, work very closely with the police chief. How long do you think it'll take to make all these renovations?
I think it should be less than three months, so, in the period, but we haven't seen how long it's gonna take, depends on the contracts and stuff.
Yeah.
They'll be recessing the front doors two feet to meet ADA requirements. As he mentioned, they're gonna be tearing up pavement along the side and installing curb stops for planning to meet planning board approval. I should say they've invested substantial monies. As far as the seating, you see they're gonna be installing tabletop seating along the front left side of the building and the back, back wall, but they've invested substantial monies, I've also worked with them to renegotiate, they've had to renegotiate their lease on the property for the new use, and obviously they'll be paying much higher rent, and I think they're gonna be spending a lot of time in the business plan in order to make that work.
I tell you, you're gonna be there a lot, or you're gonna have like a manager, or whatever the case may be?
I'm gonna be there a lot, sir, and my wife be on the redemption side.
Oh, so this is gonna be next to the redemption center?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought you were gonna have, okay, okay.
No, we're gonna move the redemption center, so--
Oh, okay, someplace, okay. And the other thing I'd like to say is recommend, if you're gonna have ten pool tables, if you do, you know, if you're successful and you're able to open up and all that, you know, I'd like you to consider having one table for people in wheelchairs, so that it could be fully accessible to all kinds of people.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Dean. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as I look at your application, your occupancy number is eighty-seven, correct?
That's correct.
And you have seating capacity of twenty-seven?
That's correct.
Okay, is that seating primarily along the perimeter, as I see here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, selectman.
And you may have said it earlier, food is not gonna be prepared on-site, or it is? I didn't catch that.
It's not gonna be prepared on-site, so--
Okay, so what kind of food is it gonna be?
It's the, the pre-cooked food from the company, you buy them and put it into the conventional ovens and heat it up.
Okay, all right. And what's your proposed hours of operation?
So we plan to open from three to one in the morning, so--
Every day of the week, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I'm also, I don't have any other questions.
Okay.
Do you want your plan back, do you need that?
Those numbers, I just wanna say, are from the planning board and also the engineer that we worked with for site plan review, as far as the occupancy.
Okay. Do you need this back, or do you want this to stay with our file? Rick, do you need one of these, or?
Yes.
It came with the application.
Okay, you have one, okay. We'll get that back, sure.
The only thing I want for the, for the record is to reflect that, given the applicant's, applicant didn't complete one line on that, and that's why Brian asked, appreciate him picking up on that, that the hours of operation that they're looking for are three PM to one AM. That's what I heard represented, okay. So, having said that, is there a motion by the board? There's no more questions?
Yeah, I'd make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we accept, but also, Attorney Abraham, if you could provide us with a, or Attorney Nova, I'm not sure.
Well, by the way, Mr. Chairman--
I'm sorry.
--I'm thinking the transferer of Mango Thai--
Oh, okay.
--was in twelve years ago when they opened the business, they're not leaving town, they have negotiated for another lease of premises close by, and due to the operation of the business, the, Mr. Kaman found that he didn't need the liquor license, that why--
Sure.
--that's why he's engaged in an agreement to transfer the license upon the approval of the Board of Selectmen, so there will be a Mango Thai--
Okay. All right, and that's good to know.
So, Chairman, I'd make a motion that we accept the location change.
Okay. Motion is a transfer.
And also the alcohol. And, sir, if you just, you know, keep our office updated on what's going on, the construction, where the construction company is, how long you think it might take, I think whenever you present something, things always change as far as the floor pan and all that, so--
Gary Helenon was the engineer, and I think Barrows, going Barrows will be doing the--
Work very closely with the building commissioner, police chief, if, I think the Board of Health, I don't know if you need anything, even though you're not gonna cook there, but you may. So contingent upon those, all those areas, I'd make a motion, and good luck.
Why don't we, I just want, for the benefit of the record, to clarify, the motion is the motion to transfer from Mai Thai Cuisine to Thai Tran doing businesses, Lucky Nine, Common Vitula license, and entertainment license?
Okay.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, I think, take the pool tables next.
Was that not part of it?
I don't see it, so I'm gonna make sure that we clarify--
Excuse me, selectman, I think technically it's also a change of license type, as I spoke to the town administrator's office, it was, it's gonna be going from--
Type to general on premises--
Restaurant--
Change of location.
As opposed to--
Restaurant to general on premises.
Okay, all right, so, general, let me see if I can now get reorganized here.
Oh, I see, yeah, it's a general on premises as opposed to--
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so amend that to state it's a general on premises license, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Next, I'll take a motion to, for the ten pool tables.
Motion? Seconded.
All right, and I'm also in favor of that, that's unanimous. The only comment that I have is, please stay close with the police chief in terms of server, server requirements, training, to make sure that those, you meet all the requirements there, and the more you have the chief and engage the chief and ask his recommendations, the better off everyone is when we're serving alcohol, so, appreciate it, and thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mike, Mango Thai is gonna remain, but without the alcohol?
Without the alcohol license, correct.
Okay, it's gonna be in, where are they moving to?
Close by.
Okay.
Good luck.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Next, we have Police Chief Tom O'Loughlin, we're gonna discuss the proposed rules and regulations as it relates to secondhand dealers. I'm gonna treat this as a hearing, because it was posted as a hearing, and we'll hear from the chief now.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, working with Detective Jay Ball, Jay has the face-to-face relationship with a number of the jewelers in town, and many of them are involved in the purchase of secondhand jewelry, so people are disposing of gold and other valuables through those jewelers. In looking at the rules and regulations that were in place, they date back many, many, many years ago, because they talk about cops and horses and things of that kind, so, working with Jay, we went out and looked at a number of bylaws and regulations in other communities, and put together the proposal, that's before you this evening. Jay can speak more directly to some of the issues that we've seen out there, there are already jewelers in town who have followed this process, and for instance Nathan, Nathan has been doing it now for just over a year, so--
Yes.
So it's not an onerous process as it relates to particularly jewelry. The current concern is, you know, we have people that come into the community, they'll rent a hotel room, and they're legitimate businesses, but they come in from out of state, they buy in jewelry, and they pack up, and they're gone that weekend. The difficulty we face, because that's considered in essence a pawn shop or along that line, they're buying secondhand goods under the statute, is we get the sheets from them, and it gives us a description of the jewelry, however, it's long gone, so if we match it to a break-in and entering or a larceny, it's near impossible to get, you know, those precious items back to the rightful owner. Simply saying to people, you know, for instance wedding rings and things of that kind-- Simply saying to people, you know, for instance wedding rings and things of that kind, other things that people have gained that have more sentimental value than the monetary value, you know, saying to them, well, we're gonna give you back a thousand dollars, doesn't go a long way. I mean, it goes some of the way, but not as long as it should. So Jay can speak to just his experience in working with the jewelers in town, and, you know, frankly, just how responsible they really are in not only dealing with these issues, but in working with us.
Mr. Chairman, board.
Good to see you, Detective.
Basically, what we've seen in the past couple of years is a large influx of not only people that reside in Milford, but surrounding areas, not heading down to Rhode Island as much, and turning in jewelry, coins, precious metals of sorts, and I'd say a large percentage now, we're finding that other jurisdictions are calling us, asking, we're finding that some of this jewelry has been stolen. Looking and speaking with Worcester, Auburn, some Rhode Island jurisdictions, we've curbed a lot of jewelry that's been melted, getting it back to people, as the chief said, wedding rings, different items of such, as he said, also Nathan's has been doing this. Basically, the process is holding it for thirty days, as the law states, however, holding the jeweler accountable. Most of the items that come in to say Nathan's, Mr. Bosse, Bosse Jewelers, and other secondhand stores, is usually legitimate, but a lot of times, we have people that are coming in with bags of jewelry, and it's just to set some more rules are stringent, that they'll turn in their slips to us, they will electronically submit, they will notify the police if anything looks out of the ordinary, people coming in over time, and we've had great success. We've had calls from other jurisdictions that are looking to piggyback on this to change their own, that don't have the same rules and regulations, and that's basically it. We've solved quite a few crimes, not only in Milford, but also surrounding towns and out of state also.
Thank you, Detective. I'll go to the members of the board, see if they have any additional comments or questions. Dean?
No, chief, I think, you know, you've been working on this for a while, I think it's something that is probably needed as far as regulations, people try to, you know, get away with things in pawn shops and whatnot, so I think this would, as a generality, what is the opinion to be, the people in the business, are they okay with this, do they feel that something should be looked at or changed?
The jewelry stores in particular, and there are a couple of them, that have followed this process, so they haven't found it to be problematic, and that's, you know, some of the reasoning, we sent it to the board, and Mr. Valani, we sent it out far and wide to anyone that handles secondhand goods of any kind, and asked them if they would come here this evening, because I'm not asking you to make a decision as a final, you know, adopt it this evening, because I wanna hear from those businesses to see, did we get it right all the way through, or are there things that we ought to go back and take another look and see if it works? We know, we know it works with the jeweler.
Sure.
I'll work the rest of the secondhand community.
Thanks, Bill.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, no, thank you, and chief, I had a conversation with the chief today about these regulations, because, you know, some of the concerns that I have, for example, you know, when I do estate work, someone passes away, I'll affiliate with one or more of the dealers to go to the person's property, tables, chairs, beds, whatever it is, they take it back to the store and then offer it to the public, and I think that, you know, some of these rules and regulations are a little restrictive for that kind of work. Clearly, you know, the jewelry, the precious metals, the electronics, you know, that kind of stuff, there's no question that I think those are items that would certainly be of interest to law enforcement, but, you know, when I see a lot of these secondhand dealers, you know, I see beds, I see bureaus, I, you know, lamps and that kind of stuff, and I think, you know, some of these regulations, I think, are a little too strong for that level of the work, so, you know, my thought was to maybe, you know, I don't know if we're talking about, you know, limit the regulated property, or somehow target in on the area of property that is of most interest to law enforcement. You know, a lot of the other steps in it, you know, I don't have a problem with, it's basically expounding upon, you know, the bylaw that we do have in place, which, as the chief said, is quite old, but that was my impression, to somehow draw a distinction between the jewelers and maybe the secondhand furniture stores.
Yeah, I would agree with you, Brian, I mean, after we had talked, I was coming down Main Street to go check on the situation, one of the pickup trucks, the junk collectors, you know, the guys that drive around, they'll take the old refrigerators over to the junkyard, and so I was thinking, oh, he's gonna have to set that stuff aside for thirty days.
Yeah.
That's not gonna fly, so, clearly, you know, I mean, that jumped out at me, and based on your comments too, I think we'll go back, and I discussed it with Jay Ball, and there are the items that, you know, gold, things of that kind, because we know it gets melted down fairly quick. The gold has more value than the, you know, the ring itself, they don't want it as a ring, they're not gonna be able to sell it as easy, so.
And that's certainly understandable, I mean, those are the items that move, that's what, you know, people are looking for, but, you know, the other stuff, I don't think we wanna really hamper these businesses, 'cause I think they offer a great service to the community, you know, whether they're, you know, kids going off to college, they can grab some nice stuff, you know, at a good price, it's a great kind of budding business that I think is springing up.
I agree.
Chief, if you could summarize that for us, because you have the requirements and draft, and the adjustments that you're going back to reconsider, if I heard the dialogue correctly, it's not intended to limit the sale of furniture, it's not intended to limit secondhand dealing in scrap metal, maybe we could define, because I know that you're right, people are driving around with scrap metal values, they're actually doing everybody a big favor, these things are not ending up in landfills, they're getting recycled, and they're earning a living by it, so I see nothing wrong with-
And being taken off of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Clearly, I mean, after the discussion with Brian, and then, as I said, just driving down the street, and it struck me, I think we do have to segregate out the things that we really have a focus on.
Right.
The items, you know, such as on Central Street, this woman has secondhand clothing, and she does, she has a lot of consignment as well, you know, it's not our intention that someone comes to sell a Celtics jacket, that they have to hold it for thirty days, that doesn't make any sense at all.
Celtics championship ring.
Then we'll have a discussion. So, you know, that point was made earlier, and as well as-
Okay, all right.
Just one thing, I may, a couple of business owners have come to me, as the chief referred to, you'll get a company respectable, will go into a hotel, and they've come to me and said, Jay, why don't they follow the same regulations as us, you're coming in, checking my paperwork, and that's gone. I've had people come to me, these people just sent it out, thirty minutes later, it's gone, it's on its way to New York to be melted, and that's someone's wedding ring, and they popped a diamond out, throw a diamond, I'm like, it's nothing, and it's been stolen, so, that, this would help that also, and along lines, the jewelry, electronics, coins, understandable furniture, absolutely.
And pawn stores have to follow that regulation already, right? A legitimate pawn has to hold it for thirty days, and give the person an opportunity to come back, or if they purchased it for sale, direct outright sale, then they still have to hold on to it.
See, they give us the sheets as well, so Nathan takes a picture of the person's ID, along with the item he's buying, and how much he's buying it for, and he uploads those photos to Jay, and from there, we get a file, we share, other police departments share with us, we share that information with them, so they can apply it against their larceny's breaking and entering, things of that kind. You know, we've had cases where, as Jay mentioned, you know, when Socket sends us their sheets, and bing, you know, you pick right up on a particular item, and we've actually gone to Rhode Island and recovered people's property, and we're able to bring it back to them, so it's valuable that way. Today, you know, the ability to email and text and the rest, it's just an easier process.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, chief, thank you, detective. If I could ask you just to sit off to the side, because there may be people who wanna comment on it, if there's somebody here who has a concern or would like to be heard that relates to this hearing, please come forward. And if you could, for the benefit of everybody and the record taker, give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Jane Robinson, I live at Sixteen Elm Street in Upton, and I'm the lady on Central Street.
Okay.
I, what you said cleared my concerns, except I have no knowledge of how this actually works, when you're doing a bylaw, is it something that you guys vote on, is it something we get to see again after it's arranged, so, 'cause some of the wording is very broad.
Yes.
Very broad.
So, as the document goes to its revisions, there will be further public hearing before it's finalized, and we'll make sure to make sure to copy you, but it'll also be posted in the paper prior to any bylaw changes, then it would have to go before town meeting.
Okay, I hope they send it, 'cause I never buy the paper.
Okay, so.
This is not a bylaw, this is rules and regulations that you are requiring in the state statute to establish.
All right, so then it's, this one is not going to zoning, so we'll make sure to co, I'm sorry, the town meeting, so we'll make sure to copy you, and we will have a public hearing, and we'll make sure to copy you, as well as anybody else with a license, a secondhand license.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
If you have particular things-
I wanna talk to you afterwards, anyway.
Okay.
You're gonna be here all night.
Well, you said you'd be here to talk.
He's here.
I'll let it wasn't for me, but, we can't talk, but if you have particular things, if you would just even drop me an email.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay.
All right, chiefofthevilleforpolice.org.
Okay, I still don't wanna talk to you, though.
I'll come by and see you.
Okay, give me five minutes after the meeting, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I'll mic form it, please.
Is there anybody else that would like to be heard? Yes, please. For the benefit of everyone.
My name's Richard Goldberg, I own Marshall's Jewelers. I think the chief's law proposed work is excellent, I've reviewed it extensively. As a jeweler, as someone who tries to do the right thing, doing the same as mentioned by Nathan does, and taking pictures of IDs, I have no problems with that, it is a little more administration, I've heard some complaining from my staff, tough, it's for the greater good of everybody. My concern is the thirty-day hold, we're all financially savvy enough to know, we hear gold price of gold goes up and down, that's my, as a business owner, that's my biggest concern, is that if I buy something, gold has gone down by five hundred dollars an ounce in the last six months, I realize it's greater than thirty days, but it's taken some pretty volatile swings. I don't know how to reconcile that, but I brought it up to the board as a big concern. I was more, I feel more comfortable with the fourteen day, but the key part, if it's legally acceptable, that my suggestion to the proposed document is that cash for gold should be taken off the table, all payments should be done by check. That immediately, in my experience in my store, wipes out the people who wanna be in a nefarious situation, because they walk out the door, they don't want it, they, it stopped everything in my business, I haven't had one problem. So, it's the cash, the cash factor that facilitates a problem.
All right, no, that's a good point, and thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Richard.
Chief, if you have those, it's, is there anybody else that would like to be heard on this topic? If not, the board's gonna take this draft under advisement as an introductory, and what we'll do is then look for the chief's next revision before we move forward, again, we'll repost, we'll post as a hearing, and everybody with licenses will be contacted. Thank you very much, everyone, thank you, chief, and thank you, detective.
Thank you. Thank you, chief, thanks.
Next item on the agenda is town administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a few brief items, the town hall roof, bids for the town hall roof project were opened on September sixth, there were four bids, all within the amount appropriated for the project, the bids will now be evaluated, and we hope to have a final contract for the board, hopefully at the next meeting. I've also been informed regarding the Milford Youth Center by town engineer Vani Reese, that the design selection committee has chosen OMR Architects as the design architect for the youth center renovations, they too, hope to have a final contract for the board at the next meeting, and finally, the police roof, work on replacing the police roof is nearing completion, we hope to have it completed by the end of next week, at which time a walkthrough will be scheduled, and a punch list prepared as required, and that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Chief, how you doing with construction over your head?
Inquire.
Is it good?
Drier, too, right?
Any questions or comments for the town administrator? Brian?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Next, we have old business, we have net metering contract, Rick, if you'd like to introduce that.
Yes, we have the final net metering contracts with Infinity Project Company to be signed, there are two net metering contracts, one for a solar facility located in Norton, one for a facility to be located in Dayton. At the last meeting, Mr. Fitzpatrick was here to go over the contracts, the additional value of these new agreements is nine point four million over twenty years, and a first year savings of two hundred and sixty-six thousand. Town council has reviewed the contracts and made required or requested revisions, which have been incorporated into the contract, the length of the contract will be five years, with a commitment from the board to seek approval at the October twenty-first town meeting for an additional fifteen-year term. I have three originals of each contract to be signed by the chairman tonight, pending your approval by vote.
Okay.
Want a motion?
No, first I wanna go through questions or comments.
No, I'm okay, I'm all set.
Okay, any questions or comments?
All set, yep.
All right, so now we can entertain a motion, if there is one.
One motion to sign each contract.
Motion, as recommended by the town administrator.
Separate for each facility.
Motion to approve net metering contract, as written by and agreed to by, or prepared by town council, and that's, I'm sorry, the name of the company again?
Infinity Project.
Infinity Project, thank you.
Infinity and beyond.
Okay, Brian?
That's what's infinity.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll vote in favor, and that's unanimous.
And also a commitment from the board that we will-
Take the town meeting the twenty-year, is it twenty?
For an additional fifteen-year term, for a twenty-year contract.
That's true. It's a twenty-year total, total, five years approved by us, fifteen by town meeting.
Correct, thank you.
All right.
The next town meeting.
The next town.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, I don't have any questions on your report, and the net metering contract is approved, that's unanimous. Next, we have FCX Foxwoods LLC host agreement. And we'll have all the parties present. Inconsistent with previous meetings, I wanna make sure we recognize and welcome our guests, Attorney Hallen representing, Alan representing Foxwoods, and Sid?
Raylik.
Raylik?
Representative Hallen.
Okay. Before we get in-depth, I just, I left this, I left the discussion hanging a little bit, and said I needed a little bit of time, I wanted to provide some feedback to the existing contract, not sure what that means, depending on what the board decides tonight, but I at least wanted to give that. It's not critical, I understand there are a lot of moving parts to this, it's not intended to be critical, but at the same time, I wanted to at least provide that feedback, because I have a few concerns that I wanted to review. And again, this is feedback, depending on how the board feels, the upfront payment schedule, Exhibit E A1, describes upfront payments, but then it goes into a long list of where the thirty million dollars comes from, and over what timeframe it's paid out. It's paid out in roughly five million increments up until the last year, where it's paid out at seven point five.
Correct.
And so, just a thought, that I think it's gonna be important, should this survive the document, that we make clear, make clear at least to the general public, who's not gonna go into the documents, what upfront payment means, because it's not, in my opinion, upfront enough, and I think it could have been more upfront loaded and more consistent with other agreements I've read. The other thing I have a concern for is, there isn't a guarantee of those payments prior to occupancy, where I've seen that in other, other host agreements, because it acts as a gate, if not received- Because it acts as a gate, if not received, if the upfront payments aren't received, then occupancy or temporary occupancy wouldn't be granted. I think that's relatively easy to do, and I say that not having sat at the table, seen all the moving parts, or been a part of the dialogue that went back and forth. Therefore, I don't think it's as, as competitive as other host agreements that I've seen. From what I can tell of the annual payments, and correct me if I'm wrong, because, you know, I think I can look at it 20 times and not necessarily get the nuance of the document, but stick with me. The annual payments of 2.675 are the monies that are paid as impact to the police fire, and I'll say, there's about 30,000 other than that that might be for economic development or whatever.
Sure.
So the annual payments, the bulk of the, we're talking about 25 million guaranteed. Just for clarity, that 25 million is their tax obligation. That's not...
Correct.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure everybody gets that, but I just want to make sure they're paying their tax obligation. Should their tax obligation go down, they still maintain that minimum at 25 million, which...
If it goes up, they'll pay the increased amount.
And they'll pay the increase. But the annual payments to the town are substantially from Foxwoods meeting tax obligation. Minus the 2.7, or 2.675. Okay, all right. The other thing I was, I have to say I'm troubled by is the fact that Milford Regional Medical Center was not part of the agreement. I think that the, in the spirit of the legislation and the gaming commission's rules, there is ample room for nonprofits to participate in the host community agreement. I think that the hospital is a tremendous asset to the community. And I think unlike, we talk about, and the developers talked about it, and I've heard other people talk about it, per capita, per capita impact as it relates to dollars, the per capita impact to a small community like Milford is substantial. So, it would make sense to me that when you sat at the negotiating table, you would be looking for a per capita dollar figure that would be substantial. The difference when it comes to a small regional hospital is if somebody is in Boston and has to be transported, whether they slip and fall, have a heart attack, or are in an automobile accident, is substantial. The impact, and I know I'm not, I'm looking at you, Sid, but I don't mean to, I'm just talking generally.
I can take it.
If somebody gets hurt in Boston, they can go to one of 30 hospitals and get great care. If somebody gets hurt in Milford, they go to one, and they get great care. While the hospital's build-out was planned and needed, because it's, it's oversubscribed today, their efforts to prevent people from coming to the hospital and, and able to do minor things, and their, their proposal, which I think was on the table for discussion, in putting a small clinic within the, the casino to help out there, to prevent those people from having to be transported if they didn't need to, and to get those people to their primary care physicians wherever they came from, makes sense to me. And it also doesn't overburden the community's healthcare system. I'm concerned about, as, as the hospital was, 7 million visitors a year. Now, we may not be talking about large numbers of transports, we may not be talking about a lot of heart attacks, and I hope we're not. Slips and falls in New England parking lots are not new, but having said that, I'm troubled and I'm disappointed that they weren't part of this, and...
I can respond if you'd, if you'd like.
Please, yeah.
Several things. Number one, in the conversations with Frank Seba, I think is how you pronounce it, he was, he tried, but he couldn't get any empirical data, so what we did, in trying to push them to come across with some dollars, was took a look at a handful of different casinos' service calls, discussed them with both chiefs, tried to get a sense of what this meant to the hospital. The service calls they get per year is about 2,500 from their eight million square foot facility and their multi-million visits. We tried to extrapolate what that meant here with both chiefs, and they sort of came to the conclusion it probably meant about 300 calls, okay? Now, call is everything from a, you know, I hurt my finger, come see what it is, to, you know, something significant, God forbid. So the estimation, that the best estimate we could come up with is that it's about 300 calls a year, which is less than one a day, okay? The difficulty was that in, in making the pitch to Scott for the $5 million and the two and a half and the 17 nurses and the like, they said, "This is unreality." You know, it's not related to anything other than a request. It's a Christmas tree. The fact is that had we been approached, they said, in a manner that said, "Here's really what's going to happen." You know, "We're going to have 300 potential more calls, of which half might actually involve staying at the emergency room for a period of time." And that results in, two nurses could have had a different conversation. I think when we approached them and said, "Give us $5 million upfront," and, what was the number, 17 nurses or some huge number...
It was 2.5 annually for the five years after.
They basically said, "You know what? We'll talk about that later when we get some statistics, and we'll get some figures, and try to figure out what we can do. That's a type of thing that we can do, aside from the HCA, but we're not going to deal with a Christmas tree approach, to be real blunt." So, I was left in the position of saying, you know, I've got no data to give them to say, "Give me some money." So they basically said two things to us. Number one, "We think it's a nominal impact. There's enough money in the deal to where if the selectmen want to take $25 million of tax money that is not being used for anything else, because they're paying for everything else, unlike most people that would pay the real estate tax, they can attribute some to the hospital." Item two, Scott said, "We'll take a look at it." He said, "I'd be glad to take a look at it. I want to be a good corporate citizen, but I don't want to be paying $5 million when I'm having $100,000 impact or $300,000 impact."
Yeah, and I'm not...
So that's sort of the explanation of how I ended up in the situation, where I couldn't get it for you.
And there was no dialogue back and forth that maybe would have helped out the hospital and come up with something less than the $5 million?
Right.
Is that because of time?
No, it just sort of flew over the transom. We immediately turned the letter around, passed it on to them, and said, "We want some money for the hospital." And the first reaction was, "Are you kidding? Here's the statistics." So that's when we went back to the chiefs and said, "Help us with this. Try to, try to give me a sense, because if in fact it's going to be, you know, a million dollars a year, then they should pay for that." We couldn't justify it. We came back with 300 calls, calls for possible medical care a year, less than one a day. Hard to justify saying, "Give me two and a half million bucks for that." So we didn't, it was met with no, those are the two answers, so we didn't call back Frank and say, "Frank, sharpen your pencil and come back with a different number." And they didn't preclude dealing with it at a later date, so...
Yeah, I'm just uncomfortable doing anything at a later date.
Sure.
As, as would, I think, most reasonable people when it comes to contracts. Again, disappointed that this effort is not helping the Milford Regional Hospital.
Mr. Chairman, may I just add something to that? Just because I feel like a representative from, from Foxwoods should say something. Sid is correct. I mean, in the, in the spirit of negotiations, a lot of things hit the table, and it's very difficult to... You certainly can't figure out the pecking order based on importance, because a lot of these items are important, from a lot of the administrative costs of the town to the hospitals and the secondary. We felt, and we've had conversations as recently as this morning, about the hospital, that that would be something that we would deal with offline. We didn't think it was something that had a place in the host community agreement, but I can tell you that we are committed to continuing conversations with the hospital, and hopefully, if, if this project moves forward.
Yeah, my concern is, you know, we talk about nonprofit symphonies, we talk about nonprofits in a lot of places. I'm not sure why it would have been left out, other than, I hear the answer. The only thing I can say, Attorney Allen, is that I'm still, I'm still disappointed that such a vital...
I understand.
A vital aspect of our community is left out.
I understand. I, I, they just...
And a very valued one, I would say. You know, for, for most of us, our families have been there, I've been there. They, they do an exceptional job with a great culture, and I just want to make sure at least one member here is supportive of that, that effort to increase the services to the community and improve on what they've already got a great thing going.
Understood.
Want to go to Section 12 of the contract? I want to understand in general, in everyday terms, what the... It appears to limit or freezes the developer from liability or obligation. And I want to make sure this isn't, it mentions hurricane, failure of utilities, those types of things. Right.
Force majeure.
Right.
Basically saying that if during your construction process, you know, a hurricane hits, they've got an obligation to complete the project within a specified period of time. If a force majeure event occurs, then they're excused for that period of time. So if, if the hurricane stops everything for 30 days, then 30 days is added to the completion. That's all.
Yeah, and that seems reasonable. I just want to make sure we're only talking about...
Yeah.
Not interruption, what I want to make sure is we're talking about construction only, and not interruption of business or business continuity after construction.
No, they're required to keep it open 24/7.
Correct. All right, and that, this isn't, this isn't a means by which somebody could claw back to the table saying, "Four years from now, we had a blizzard, and it didn't have revenues." Okay.
This is common in all construction contracts.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure it's limited to construction, so I'm good with that. Is there any way to get the ICE Image Program extended to subcontractors? You know, one of the things that, that we've looked at in our, in our efforts to do work within the town is to say, "Look, the town has signed up for the ICE Image Program, but the contractors that we're going to sign up for, we're going to hold responsible for making sure that their, their people are legally entitled to work." The I-9 verification, audit, those types of things.
Well, the, the general reaction I guess I'd have is these are all union contracts. The unions are extremely interested in making sure everybody is a documented worker. So I think that when they get to the point of actually negotiating each subcontract with the main union contracts, I can't imagine there would be a problem forcing the subs to be ICE compliant also.
Or they may also have other subcontract. They may decide, for example, while in operation, they might want to subcontract out services for something else while inside.
Anything's possible, but that's not the way.
For cleaning rooms, or, or whatever. It's just a different business model.
I've never seen it in the industry. I mean, the...
Would it be hard to incorporate?
What?
To get the I-9 verification and ICE Image Program incorporated with the subs?
No, during operations, every employee of the company, and I would, I would tell you that my interpretation would be employee includes independent contractors, even though technically it doesn't. It's certainly the spirit of what the deal was. One, two, I've never seen in the casino industry those types of things farmed out.
Can, can we have it more explicit?
These people are control freaks. They're controlling.
Because I agree with you, and I agree with you. I'm just wondering, can it be more explicit in the contract?
I'm not sure it needs to be, but I'll take a look at it and see if there's something we can...
Because I, I agree with you.
Probably for you, right?
No, I, I can't think of any problem.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you, and, and that's been part of what we've seen locally with certain businesses. We've seen certain subcontract where they, they avoid that whole discussion, say, you know, e- even to the average person.
Sure.
They can contract a roofer for the house. Whoever the subcontractors are that show up, you can be certain a lot of times that some of those people are not legal. So we've seen it, we've experienced it. That's why we speak about it.
We can do that by letter or some sort.
No problem. You know, and there were just some other, I thought were some best practices that existed in other contracts. So, example, Boston was able to look at the developers' impact to local insurance rates. So you could, I think, within a small area of town, radically impact insurance rates for, for car insurance. There was a component within the Suffolk Downs Agreement that had mitigation as it related to car rates.
They copied 90% of our contract.
Did they?
A few things, yeah, absolutely. They took the whole thing. I mean, blindly, they took the whole thing.
From my read of it, there is a lot of it, that if they're smart, they would. So I just want to, I'm not talking about the things that are great here. That's the problem, right? I'm talking about some things that are gaps.
I think that's an instance where some lawyers said, "I can't make it look exactly the same way as the Shesky contract." I can't imagine how that ends up being applicable.
And the other component that I'm sure Foxwoods would not have an issue with is the guaranteed ride home program for impaired drivers, should they have a impaired driver.
It's their policy already.
It, it was part of their contract. There was, there's a component that talks about completeness of the program, is actually a definition, and it talked about 75 and 50%, and I'm wondering why we talk about complete in terms of 75 and 50%.
Mikey?
You're saying in ours either?
Yeah, yes, in ours. So they could get temporary occupancy, temporary occupancy for 75% completion in some areas and 50% completion in others. And it struck me as odd that would, those are low numbers.
Yeah, they have to have a temporary certificate of occupancy. That can't be changed. So whatever the inspector and the building inspector, whatever your codes and regulations are, they can't open without... So this is not override it. What it, what it says is that, once you get your temporary occupancy for the casino, you have to have at least 75% of the, of the parking done and 75% of the gaming area. So in other words, you could, you could have all of your, you know, building fully complete. It can be sprinkled, it has all the security systems and whatever, so you get your temporary certificate of occupancy. We wanted to make sure, we, we were layering an additional protection on top of that for the town. So this is, again, was drafted from the standpoint of providing additional assurances to the town that they couldn't open up with one slot machine.
Okay.
That you had to have at least 75% of the gaming floor open and 75% of the parking. We just felt that that was, that would be an encouragement to them to get the whole thing open at one time, for a whole variety of reasons. So it doesn't override it, it actually supplements your, your building codes.
And actually, when I hear that rationale, it makes perfect sense, so I appreciate that protection.
We were happy with substantial completion. They...
Yeah, they want to negotiate a little bit more specific. So again, let me just, let me just say that there are other agreements that don't allow any occupancy unless the upfront dollars have been paid. Going to the fourth anniversary and only, and having 40 months to complete, if I do the math right, and I know this is complex, because it depends on occupancy versus building permit versus when the state awards the license.
Correct.
Depends on what you call the anniversary date. My preference is not to have any occupancy until all the upfront payments are received, similar to the other agreement that I mentioned. And I don't know where the other board members are on upfront payments. When we start spreading them out to four years, it starts to seem less like an upfront payment and more like a overtime payment. And the other thing was, the hospital was a serious concern to me. I just, I, I don't mean to be redundant, I'm just trying to recap. And the last thing I didn't mention was mitigation for loss of property value. I thought that dollar value could go up. I asked that it go up, but I'm prepared to make those comments and let the, go to the board members for their thoughts and their comments that are independent of mine or comment on mine. Dean?
No, Bill, I'm all set. I basically said my comments last week. I think a lot of these items, as you've said, Sid, I am also very close to the hospital in many ways, and I, I think throughout this whole process, you know, the hospital is another thing close to my heart, and also to the people at Milford, is the healthcare facility on Countryside Drive, the pharma geriatric authority. So, as this thing goes forward, and I know that both individuals have spoken to the Foxwoods, Mr. Butera, and that, like I said, if this thing, as this thing goes forwards, if it does go forward, you know, I also agree with, with Bill, that, you know, they should be giving something. I don't know what it is, but the geriatric authority is putting on a new unit, you know, maybe physical therapy equipment, whatever it is, handicap, whirlpool, whatever the case may be, and as far as the hospital, something towards the building fund, or something in the hospital, as far, they have a, they have many, many fantastic departments, but maybe physical therapy, the cardiovascular department, stuff like that. So, as you've said, Robert, the, you know, hopefully those things will continue to occur, and that I know that, you know, the Milford people would, you know, would still, I appreciate that, as far as both... that as far as both valuable entities in the town of Milford to receive something. Something that is, you know, going to be useful and, and reasonable and whatnot.
Sure.
But as far as everything, but as far as everything else, I, I'm satisfied and I look forward to going forward.
Mr. Chairman, not to interrupt, I just should have started with, Scott was traveling tonight, and hopefully, I know he was going to try to reach out to let you know that he wasn't available tonight. He tried to change his flight, just wasn't able to do it, but he did want to be here tonight.
Prior to the meeting, I received a voicemail.
Great.
Okay. Brian?
Yeah, thank you. I'm a little bit disadvantaged because I highlighted the, the mock draft and the, the original draft, or the, the clean subsequent draft, the pages are off a little bit. But just generally speaking, because I did want to get a little bit of information, because Bill did make a good point in terms of the upfront payments, and I want to look at that. That's one of the D exhibits, isn't it?
Yeah, E, A, 1.
The Community Development Fund. So let's take a look at that for one sec. So we have $30 million payable as follows, honor before the date that's 30 days after first building permit.
Right.
Okay? So that's $5 million.
Correct.
Okay?
And that's less, money's already payments already.
Less anything put into the Resident Impact Fund.
Correct.
Which, by the way, was extended from five years to 10 years.
10 years, correct.
Following the last meeting and input from some public residents. So I, I think that's a great benefit. First anniversary of the building permit, $5 million. Now, this place is going to take longer than a year to build, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, there's $10 million, you know, the doors aren't open yet.
Correct.
Honor for the second anniversary of the building permit, $5 million. It may be open at that point, but still not.
Nope.
So, you know, so there's 15 right there, and then you've got the third anniversary of the building permit, 7.5. So you should be open at that point.
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, I, I'm perfectly satisfied with that allocation. You know, I think it meets both interests. I mean, I think it certainly benefits the town, and it's reasonable, I think, for the development, for the developer, and I think recognizes the realism of the building process. In terms of the hospital, you...
Brian, if I might, I just, I'm not sure, we, we've got it right, so I want to make sure, there's a 7.5 million dollar payment at the fourth anniversary?
Right.
Okay.
I didn't even get to that point.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, because I was just going to the point of the doors opening.
Okay.
As the doors, so once the doors open, the doors will be open for a year, there's another 7.5.
Correct.
Okay, but roughly, you know, 22, 23 million dollars is pretty much going to be put forth before the doors open.
Correct.
In all, in all realism. And then, of course, there's the annual payments, which is the, the percentage kicker, I guess, 2% of the annual gross revenue in excess of $500 million, less, of course, allocations made for the school aid and that sort of thing. So again, I, I think those numbers are balanced in the sense that there's a benefit to the community and there's the recognition that this is a building process and it's going to take some time. In terms of the hospital, I think everybody on this board supports the Milford Hospital, and, you know, whenever the hospital's come before us for anything, we've always been there. I think what this agreement does is put the ball in our court and gives the town the resources that if we do, in fact, want to take taxpayer dollars and benefit a tax-exempt organization that pays no real estate taxes or no taxes to the community, you know, that's certainly something that, that can be done. And I'm sure that as time goes by, if in fact there is an impact to the hospital, that's something that we can address. But I, I do understand the argument that was made, that it's very difficult to pre-allocate these grant dollars to different classes or different individuals. At what point do we stop? Do we go to the Milford Geriatric? Do we go to individual medical clinics? And, and whatever. So, you know, I don't have any strong feelings that the hospital is not included per se, but I think what this agreement does, if in fact it goes the full nine yards, it gives future decision makers the tools and the resources to offer benefits as the future decision makers may seem fit to any type of organization, whether it's profit, nonprofit, or as, as some people have suggested, you know, all of this money, you know, ought to go back to, to the taxpayers.
Right.
So, you know, those decisions can certainly be made in, in the future. The other thing, and Sid, I'm just looking at your memo because you've kind of highlighted the, the different changes.
Right.
And I'm not sure if there was anything else that stuck out in my mind.
We sort of went overboard and gave you the little detail, you know.
Yeah.
Literally anything that changed a comma.
Well, that helps.
So it's, it's a few pages, but...
I think it's very good. I mean, you know, the language you have in terms of the tree buffer for the residents, I, I think that's good. I think stretching out the Resident Impact Fund to 10 years after operation, I think is a good thing. Again, I think that's a real benefit to folks who think that they are going to suffer some property value loss. The infrastructure improvements, I think, are many, and it's clear at, at what point those are to be put forth in terms of the roadway, the sewer, and the, and the water. I see that the arbitration clauses were, were polished up a little bit. And I'm not sure that there was anything else that jumped out at me. You've got the best efforts language in terms of the employment, and then there was also the, oh gosh, where was it, the 50-mile radius?
Right. The, the big change, Brian, was the extension of the home fund from five years to 10 years. I would say that's the substantive change.
And actually, starting it earlier too, we're starting it with the issuance of the license as opposed to...
Yes.
So that's significant because...
It made sense, it is.
There may be an effect on value just of the issuance of the license.
Right.
Begin right here.
Right.
Begin right away. If there's a sale that takes place two months after the license is issued, even though we haven't got none of the other money, that will fall on us.
So it's more than 10 years.
Yeah.
It could be 12 to 15.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no question about it.
And the rest of the changes are really stuff that you and I would enjoy talking about as lawyers, you know.
Right.
Kind of how many angels dance on that of a pin, three arbitrators versus one.
Yeah.
Transfer restrictions, you know, I want to use this word rather than that word. The stuff that, you know, we make a lot of money on, I guess is the way to put it, but I don't think it has any impact on the public generally or what you gentlemen would consider to be particularly important. That was the big change, five to 10.
And in terms of the image program, you know, I think it's great that it's in there. You know, I don't, you know, share the same concern that we, you know, have to try to stretch it out to subcontractors, because in fact, we at the town don't do that. We request the I-9 verification, but we don't tell subs to actually join the image.
And I might just add on that topic that you have an extra layer of protection, particularly you, Bill. The, the Gaming Commission is, is every bit as involved, is every bit as involved in the construction process as they are once the casino opens. You know, back in the 50s, that's when hanky panky used to occur, 1950, 1958. They take a very active hand in supervising that process and being involved with the employees. It's, it's a lot more careful than just any normal, you know, construction project. Most of the time, most jurisdictions end up with a person on site from the Gaming Commission, you know, a state patrolman, a couple of people on site watching over the whole process, checking people's IDs. So while they haven't passed that regulation yet, I know it's been discussed, I wouldn't be surprised to see that because, much like the rest of the Commonwealth, they're adopting very precise rules on a lot of stuff.
Yeah, and, and you know the history, I want to share for the benefit of why we, we get picky on some of this language. The fact is, Milford has been uniquely impacted by some of the challenges associated with what, what I would consider an underground workforce. And it's impacted our housing, it's impacted a whole host of things, and most certainly has led to the deaths of some Milford residents. So we're enormously sensitive to it. And, you know, understood, you know. It's a national issue, but it's also a local issue.
Sure.
You know, I, Brian, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
You know, throughout this process, I'm comfortable that I, that personally, and I want to say this, that I made myself clear and I was honest in two areas. One is that, and the first, that, that while whatever my personal thoughts were, my personal thoughts were clear when people asked me what I thought, I stated what they were and said I had objections to the casino locating in such a small town and that land and all of that. But, but more importantly, when it came to negotiations, I put those aside, and I was clear in my own mind that regardless of my personal views, it was about a negotiation. It was about, should this come to Milford, I'm looking for the best, best agreement. I, I think there, I think there are other areas that we could improve on. I've mentioned some of those tonight. I've spent a lot of time looking at this agreement and looking at other agreements. But, but I'm also comfortable of something else, that the representatives that we had working for us were working in our best interest. Certainly during the negotiations, I still have enormous trouble with the traffic study and the traffic consultants, I'm not going to jump into that. But, that said, as far as our attorneys, I appreciate the work that you've done in the document. So I'll, we have some votes, I think, that members are ready to make a motion on.
I think that the rules are kind of specific on this, so maybe if Jerry and I can walk you through them.
Good, please.
The first is that there's going to be a resolution that is being proposed to approve the host community agreement between the Town of Milford and Crossroads Massachusetts LLC and substantially deform as the host agreement that you have before you and is submitted to the Board of Selectmen and attached as Exhibit A. So that's the first resolution that you should vote on.
Sid, can you repeat that again?
Sure.
Please.
Slower. I'll give you a copy of it.
Okay.
Right, you have one, right? Yeah. It's the now there for it.
Okay.
Okay? So this is approving the host community agreement.
Look at my computer.
That's the, that's the...
To approve this.
They should look at it, make sure you all have the right one, vote it, and, you know, if you're going to vote it, then execute it.
This is the, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
This is...
That's it.
The documents are all...
I hope the host agreement is attached to that.
It's a form of...
Because my resolution's a lot, littler than that one.
It's just a form of attached, it's attached.
All right. Okay, Mr. Chairman, so the...
First motion is to approve the ECA exhibits.
Exhibits to board.
This, this heading here, that's, that's our motion.
Okay. Well, you know, we're taking some care here, and for two reasons. One, this board has never, or any board in Milford has never voted for or against the casino. This is our first experience with it.
Men's election.
Second, we have a whole lot of attorneys here and we want to get it right.
Right. So this is the first Board of Selectmen to vote on it?
Yes, it's been, all cities, yeah, they're all cities.
Yeah, it's all cities.
So you want this motion? All right. Order of the Town of Milford Board of Selectmen approving and authorizing the execution of a host community agreement with Crossroads Massachusetts LLC.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
All right, that's two in favor, one opposed?
Okay, so that passes?
That passes as a vote?
Right. The next one then is the resolution or motion authorizing the Board of Selectmen to execute the host community agreement from the town to be bound by the host community agreement. So that's the motion that's being made.
I'll second it.
Seconded. It's two in favor, one opposed?
Okay.
Incorporated, it looks like the votes are incorporated in this one.
That's a vote?
Yeah, okay.
And we should sign this now, because the statute says it has to be signed before we can go to the next step.
Okay.
Actually, sign one either.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you can, those lots of...
Not just one, right?
Yeah, that's mine. I just had it stacked, it looks like it's...
We're just going to sign one for now, then we'll give you...
Yes, yeah, just give us the tabs.
You don't want to sign all 10 right now?
Yeah, well, I don't, do whatever you want.
It's messy, but...
You're going to skip it?
Yep.
I have a problem. I don't have a pen. Don't give me a pen.
Do you mind? How do you want, do you have a paper?
I think it's black, yeah. The pens don't make it down to this end of the table. Get that one, okay?
I'm going to sit, and...
We have the signature pages of Foxwoods, all originals that will be attached to that.
Yeah, I think I need to sign two on that, Sid.
Yes.
Let me just check on that. I can only sign one tab.
You're right.
Yeah. I think I actually signed the agreement.
You signed the agreement, the resolution. Thank you, Bill. Can you look at this now?
We'll be attaching the signature pages of Foxwoods to it.
I'm going to sign the other thing.
Great, thank you.
It's a logistical matter, Jerry, while they're going through the paperwork. I'm sorry, go ahead, you ready?
I, yes. The next one is a request that is made again by the statute, authorizing and approving the holding of an election in accordance with Massachusetts Gaming Law, Chapter 23K, Section 15, parentheses, 3, the election. Upon receipt of a written request for such an election from Crossroads Massachusetts LLC, we have the request from Crossroads Massachusetts LLC authorize, requesting the election to be held. And there'll be two resolutions on that, right? One is just the request for the election. The second one, which I'll read into the record at the same time, is it authorizes and approves the holding of such election prior to a positive determination of suitability having been made to the developer as an applicant for the Category 1 license by the Gaming Commission in accordance with the statute prior to the developer's request for such election, on the condition that prior to such election and at the expense of the developer, the town will conduct a process for informing the community about the commission's determination of suitability standards and procedures in accordance with the law. What this basically is, is the commission, well, let me not characterize it. The commission basically said that if towns accept host community agreements before they're finished with their final suitability determination of each developer, then you have to tell the town that you're voting for a host community agreement. I have not approved, the Gaming Commission says, the developer. Mr. Crosby has gone on and indicated what he really means by that, more likely than not, is that, you know, it's possible there'll be somebody who is a part of the developer that doesn't pass suitability and might get kicked out. So that's the most likely practical occurrence that might occur. So far, every jurisdiction that has entered into a host community agreement does not have a suitability determination. So the process is a little bit strange. So those are the two resolutions that are being requested. The letter was delivered, and these are the letters. This one asks for the election to be held on November... Wait, I got it backwards.
This, this letter is just to hold the election out prior to the board making their, the Gaming Board making their determination.
Got it.
And then that needs to be motioned and approved, and then, then we'll do the next motion.
This, um, this reg was issued in a request from Everett, wasn't it?
No.
Back in, uh...
Springfield, yeah.
No, Springfield, it was Springfield that did it.
Yeah, because they, they wanted to have their vote prior to.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's what we found.
And when the spread came out.
You can have the original.
One of the class ones that had this...
No, and wasn't the original timeframe around June or so? They thought that they would be approved, but, okay.
Now, now to November.
Okay.
That's why the advocacy...
Okay, yeah.
They intended to have all this information ahead of time in there.
Didn't get there.
They thought that they would be approved, but, okay.
Now, now in November.
Okay.
That's why the advocacy urgency was...
Okay, yeah.
They intended to have all this information ahead of time in there.
Didn't get there.
Yeah, I won't characterize it either.
Right.
So Sid, since we threw it right, what's the second motion again, please?
This authorizes and approves the holding of an election in accordance with the statute upon receipt of a written request for such an election from Crossroads. That's the first motion that is being made, so you should move on then. Brian?
I'll second it.
Good.
Okay, that's two in favor, one opposed?
And we're going to have that one signed, right, Ken?
And that, I will characterize it, that comes as a result of a state working very fast, pushing through this process. Because suitability, I've always said suitability would have been great to know upfront before community votes. I understand the reason why it's not here, though. They're behind.
I guess there was a second, two in that?
Well, yes, there was a motion made seconded.
Correct.
Two said yes.
Yes.
Good.
Vote two to one.
And I just, this authorizing and approving the holding of such election prior to a positive determination of suitability having been made by the developer, by the commission in accordance with the statute, prior to the developer's request for such election, on the condition that prior to the election at the expense of the developer, the town will conduct a process for informing the community about the commission's determination of suitability standards and procedures in accordance with the law.
So that's that motion.
Motion.
Seconded.
Great. Two in favor, one opposed, that's a vote?
Right?
Yeah, I gave that to him. All right. Yeah, we've got both, both letters.
So the second letter you have?
Yes.
That's... Here's the letter.
Yes.
Here's the rest of the copies for... Here's yours.
The last piece is, there's a letter in the package requesting that the election be
held on the 19th of November.
Why was suggesting the motion?
Is that the only motion you need?
Yes, the next one. Right?
Motion needed, motion needed for an election on the 11-19.
Motion, second, whatever.
I'll second it.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous.
Good. Okay. And the last piece that we need is, we need, per the statute, an acknowledgement of the receipt of the letter for the request of the election pursuant to the law. That has to be presented by them to you, and then you have to acknowledge that you got it.
They received their letter.
That you got the letter.
You have to sign a receipt.
Okay.
The statute requires you to sign a receipt.
Unfortunately, this is a gaming act requirement, so it wastes your time.
I'm signing the green card for the post office.
My attorney said sign it.
Do you need just an original sign, or are we signing all of these?
Just the original.
Just the original? Okay, is the rest copies for us?
Yes, that's just a receipt, Bill.
Okay.
Saying you got the letter asking for the election.
There you go.
We could have brought extra copies.
I know. See how tight the budget is?
That's why we're fiscally in good shape.
Kevin's living large over there, he's got two pens.
Oh, heaven. He's reported, and they're blue.
It's a good reporter.
He brings the backup, right? He brings the backup.
Lizzie has a computer and multiple pens.
You're holding out?
That's my receipt.
Um... Giving them everything.
Take it.
I'm surprised I haven't given you my minutes and everything else. Jerry, you're sticking around a little bit, right?
Everybody wants an original, but rather than bothering the Board at this point in time, we'll get, you know, originals signed after.
I'll stay here tonight, sign whatever's going to be signed.
Yeah, if you want to leave them.
Yeah, I will too.
And they're all tagged?
They're all tagged, yeah, when they reassigned.
I think you have what you need from me.
Yes, we're done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sid.
Thanks for everything.
Yeah, if we could just get everybody's attention again, it's important that the community understand the next step in the process and the Board discuss what's next to the process.
Yeah, on a very practical level, the next thing we'll be doing this week is preparing what's called a concise summary of the terms, which actually, we then have to publish, going to be, in this case, we're going to publish it both in Milford Daily News and in the Town Crier. So by law, that has to be done, has to be published. We'll have that done this week. That concise summary, which I have to certify, then also has to go on the ballot itself. So it'll have the basic question, do you want a casino in this location or not? But that concise summary will be on the ballot too, so I've got to get that done this week, get that published, get it to the Town Clerk, so she can prepare the ballots so we can have everything ready. Then your Board should have a discussion at some point about whether or not, and if so, when, you want to have any forum that you might want to have, so citizens can come in, if they have any questions or concerns about the host community agreement, can ask questions and get responses, so.
Yeah.
That's what I think may be your next step.
And I've thought about that, and, you know, what I think might be, I'll throw out a suggestion, the Board can do with it as they wish. What I'm thinking is that at least we make that closer to the election, rather than too early, I think. As people begin to focus on it, talk about it, holidays happen, whatever it is, if we could make that community forum closer to the election, it may be of greater benefit to the residents. And so I'll just throw that out as a suggestion. And I do it generally because it can be mid-November and that would be somewhere around the timeframe. I don't know if you're thinking the same or what you guys are thinking.
Yeah, absolutely. I think, you know, this whole process, you know, we've talked about this before, and Bob, I think, you know, the first thing I think I'd ask is that, once everything is ready and everything is finalized, as far as summaries on the document of the host agreement, you know, I would hope that, you know, Foxwoods sends every household in the town of Milford a copy. And not just that, you know, the legal entities, but like I said, and you can work with Town Council on that, but as far as the summarizations that he's given, so that the people at home know exactly what is included in that document. And, yeah, I mean, I think we should have one or two hearings, meetings with the public. I mean, we've done this before, and I think that, you know, we can talk about the appropriate dates, but I mean, to me, I think, you know, one or two meetings with the public where they can come upstairs and ask questions, we can have the town officials there and other people that we feel should be there that answer questions, but absolutely. I think there should also be additional copies at the, here at the Town Hall, at the library, and at the Senior Center, in case something gets lost at home or someone wants to just look at it at those three buildings. So, yeah, I think the process that we've started here and not finished yet, I think, you know, all this has to be done now to really solidify the process. So, all those things I think should be done, and I think we should have at least one or two meetings before the election, and we can decide on the appropriate dates in a couple of weeks. But I think the residents would want that.
Okay, Brian?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and I was actually thinking a little bit different in terms of the hearings, because I think each of our public buildings sort of represent different constituencies. I think that folks that go to the Senior Center might not go to the Youth Center, might not go to the schools, so, I mean, if it were solely my decision, I would probably look to schedule a series of meetings at the Senior Center, at one of the schools, at the Youth Center, and certainly a Town Hall. And the agenda would be completely open, it would be, whatever questions folks have would be there to answer it, because at that point, you know, the four corners of the document is going to speak for itself, there are no more moving parts, and folks can ask about the document. So clearly, I think we're going to need to have, you know, certainly Town Council and other representatives there to maybe help us with a lot of the nuances of the document. But, you know, I would not be adverse to, you know, traveling out to the different buildings and trying to meet with folks at their convenience.
I think, Mr. Chairman, as Brian just mentioned, when the, when, Jerry, excuse me, when the power plant, before it went to town meeting, same similar process, we had a meeting at Town Hall, we had a meeting at the library, and it went at the schools, and it worked out pretty well. So, I think we can talk about that and do what's best, you know?
Okay. All right.
One final thing, if, and if Foxwoods is ready, I was just asking Bob, they have to request their zoning change, which I think they're prepared to do tonight, to provide that to the Board, or maybe not.
Well, in speaking with Larry earlier today, he suggested we come back on the 23rd, asking for the Board, just the timing of the Board was such that he thought the 23rd was a better day, because that kicks in, you would have 14 days, and there's 65 days the Board has to hear it. In his mind, it was best to have the Planning Board meet after the referendum, so he played the numbers and thought it would be best to have the Planning Board meet sometime around the 20th, after the referendum.
And that'll address the use of that property for a casino?
Zoning change. They allow the use there.
And the number of floors? Is that also height?
Yes.
Okay.
The difficult sort of zoning stuff, only it's going to be a lot more basic than a zoning change, because we have this host community agreement that can, it can reference in a lot of ways.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Jerry?
I think that's it for this.
Yeah, who just went up?
Mr. Chairman, can I say something else?
Yeah, please, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it just kicked on, yeah.
Yeah. The heat just kicked on.
No, I think that...
I feel like I'm at the sauna at the gym or something, waiting for Joe Renda to come up.
Thought it was a hot flash, huh?
I think what we're doing here is, you know, most appropriate. For us to schedule the meetings and all that and the appropriate forums, I think as this goes on, you're probably going to have some rallies for and against. I mean, I'm not going to be attending any of those. I don't think it's my place. My job was to get the job done, bring it to a referendum, and then have the meetings that are sponsored by the town. So, you know, people can have their rallies and, you know, for or against, but, you know, I will not, I think it's inappropriate for me to attend those, so.
Okay.
I'm glad that we're setting up meetings, and I think that's the way to go, and I think that's the best way to really present the information to the, to the residents and the electorate.
Yeah. And for my part, whether it be rally for or against, if they invite me as a public official, I'd be happy to attend if I can make it. You know, sometimes business obligations preclude my ability to, or an anniversary. So, yeah, it didn't work for you.
I don't know if I have to do my calendar, but I'll judge events on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make one remark, I'd like to thank the department heads, particularly Vani, in pulling together a tremendous amount of data, working with our consultants, the town consultants, and helping out on that stuff. Vani did a phenomenal job, as did the chiefs and as did most of the other, as did all the department heads. Kudos to them, it was a lot of work and they got it done very efficiently.
Okay.
If I could just add to that briefly, it was an amazing amount of work. I've sat where you sat in another community, and you can be very proud of your department heads for turning things around the way they've turned things around. It's really incredible what the, you know, through the leadership of the town administrator, what's been done here, and I appreciate all the efforts that the town went through to really accommodate the voters to make a great informed decision, so.
Kind of you to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, before we go any further, we're going to let these folks go, I think, and we're going to talk about, if we can't get the heat off...
Yeah, but...
I just give them five minutes.
Yeah, why don't we take, why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Wait a minute now, I might get accused of getting a gift here. Okay, all right. All right, okay.
Well, well, I saw it. I can attest to that. ...public forums will have. Jerry had mentioned prior to the recess that intended to publish in two papers, a summary of this host community agreement, so that's a good thing, it'll get out to all the households.
Mr. Chairman, Kevin just mentioned too that we talked about sending a copy of the concise summary to every resident in town, well, in fact, the Town Crier goes to every resident in town.
It's true.
So we've covered that, we don't need to do a separate...
There you go, excellent.
There you go. Okay.
Excuse me, if it is totally inclusive, okay, but otherwise, they can send something out again.
It will be, it'll be the whole, the whole, the concise summary is four pages, very easy.
You just have to make sure it is.
Yeah, you know, it's there, yeah.
Right?
So it's the same thing we would send out.
And that has to be, that has to be published.
That has to be by law.
That has to be published, yeah.
Right, so.
And the last comment I want to make is, on this topic anyway, because we have other Board issues to address, is I, you know, I want to thank the other Board members, my colleagues. We just went through what I would consider a very significant amount of work, and something I would consider very historic for our community. It was done with clearly different opinions, strong opinions, but I think that this Board represented itself well, I'm very proud of the members here. I think the Board represented this community well. I want to thank the Town Administrator and his staff, in addition to the department heads. The Town Administrator put out a great deal of information, information that you cannot read or find anywhere in any other casino-related project, I think were a benchmark. Hopefully as organizations who are sometimes critical of, with sunshine laws and open meeting discussions, that they, that they look at the discussions that this Board has had, and then the turnaround time for documents and reports, put them on their website. I know it's been helpful to the media, and I appreciate the media publishing a great deal of that. They had, they were accurate and able to be concise as a result of all that information. So, I want to thank the Board members. I know we came at this differently, I know we continue to think of it differently, but that is democracy at its best, and I think the town benefited in some regard from having differing views, so, appreciated and I respect both of your views. Like I said, we can look at this information and come up with different conclusions, and that's fine. Okay, next item on the agenda is new business, and that's a Milford Youth Center one-day license request, is there a motion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, yeah, if there was a...
Did I skip something?
There's just a lay-in on the water rate increase.
Yes.
Attorney, move.
Thank you, thank you. They'll keep me in line.
I wasn't here for the Youth Center.
Water rate, water rate increase.
Yes.
Why don't we talk about that, Jerry? You were scheduled under old business to discuss that.
Yeah, of course, it's been out there now for a week and a half, you all have the decision, it's received a lot of publicity. From our perspective, it was a very good decision. As you know, they, the company received a 53% increase, roughly a little less than that, where they thought a little less than an 83% increase.
Sorry, go ahead.
I couldn't get the hand signal there.
Trying to get the door shut.
I thought you were signaling the touchdown, I didn't know.
Take this.
Well, that's the touchdown, okay, all right. Fair catch then, I don't know.
Just trying to shut the door so the talk out in the hallway won't disrupt.
I understand, I understand. So again, we have the decision, what they received was considerably less than they applied for, you know, in the standard in the industry, the companies usually get 85% to 90% of what they're looking for, here they got 65% of what they were looking for. Still a lot of money, no question about that, but we knew that was going to be the result, it had to be a result with the new plant and all the expenses that go with that. Developed an enormous amount of data throughout the case, and you've read the decision, and it was unusual in some respects, number one, a decision of that magnitude for a small water company case shows you how seriously the DPU took it. And we raised very serious issues of what we viewed as mismanagement of the water company, which the DPU also addressed and agreed with in large measure, and took into account to setting the, what's called the return on equity at a lower rate than has probably been approved in 30 years of DPU water company proceedings. So extremely successful in that regard. And also throughout the decision, in a number of instances, the DPU has set some very tight procedures now for the future for this company in dealing with their affiliated companies. That's people that don't understand that, this is the Milford Water Company, which has RH White Construction Company, the Whitemanville Water Company, Whitewater Inc., all owned by the same White family interests, constantly interacting, contracting with each other. Has always been a major concern, has been addressed in past rate cases, but for the first time, the DPU has taken it very, very seriously, expressed their serious doubts about the processes that were followed, and again, in essence, punished them for the way these things were handled, and set some important strictures for the future for the way these affiliated transactions will be handled. So, I'm very pleased with that, and... So, I'm very pleased with that, and, and the decision itself segues into something that I gave to the town administrator a while ago, potentially on behalf of your board, if you want to go that way, which was a potential warrant article to seek an appropriation, to begin a study of whether or not this town, what, wants to acquire the Milford Water Company. Under the 1881 legislation, there's provision in that legislation that created the water company that authorizes the town to take it over. It's a process, so we have to negotiate a price. If we can't agree upon a price, then we go before the DPU, the way it's structured now, and the DPU ultimately would have to arrive at the price. Ultimately, a two-thirds town meeting vote would be involved before that was done. But I put that together in part because it's been talked about, each of you have talked about it in the past, publicly, it's been discussed many times. It always comes up when there's a rate case, over my years here, there's always frustration when, whatever the increase might be, and now we've had, in two and a half years, a 33% increase and a 53% increase. And what we now have before us, because of this last case, is an incredible amount of data, data that's fresh, and data that experts can now look at to really give us the kind of advice we need as to whether or not it's feasible. If you wait two or three years, that data is dated, and this is as fresh as it can get, and I mean, hundreds of thousands of pages of, of documents, electronic files, that, again, the right experts can come here and analyze and, and help us determine whether or not it's a good idea to do that. And that is the first step, to get the money, to, to get those experts in here. And then, when your board can see the reports from some experts, see some evaluations, potential values, then you can make the decision as to whether or not to take it another step, maybe create a committee to study it, and then ultimately bring it back to town meeting, if you start negotiations or not. So, again, I had in mind, although I'm going to get a report from Dave Russell, the engineer we've used on a couple of rate cases, as to his thoughts and the approaches he wants, and some good ideas of the expenditures we might face, both from services like his and also of evaluation experts, we'll have that before town meeting. But I have in mind a figure in, in the range of $100,000, I'm sure, is what it would cost. So, I, you know, your board, again, I put it in, it's your, your board's article, you can decide to go forward with that article or not, as the case may be, but I thought the time was ripe to do that.
And you and I have talked about this personally, and I've talked about it publicly as well, that now is as good a time as any to, to begin to look at that. But Dean, any comments or thoughts?
Yeah, no, in the past, I think it's been studied once, I think, pretty diligently in the past, and I think Attorney DeCapua led that group, and another time it was done informally. Yeah, I think there are a lot of pros and cons, as Jerry said, every time the rate increase in the past, residents think that if we take it over, that it's going to be tremendous benefits, and I think, you know, we have to look at it carefully, because the pipes under the ground, the, the infrastructure, it's, it's tough to put a price on it, the water and all that, as Jerry has said in the past. I, I think it's something that, I think it would be okay to, to begin deliberating on it, and then I think, as we get closer to town meeting, depending on the information you provide us, Jerry, we can decide, you know, to, you know, go forward at town meeting this year or wait till the annual, but I, I think there are enough reasons why we should probably, you know, have a serious undertaking of that at this time. Not, you know, the, the price of the, of the increase, 53%, that's not the biggest thing. It's just all the other things that you've delineated in your, in your summary, on the, on the transparency, the, the using of, you know, affiliations within the system, of going off a bid, but it's the same company and all that, and then, I, I think the trust factor that, that has occurred over the past few years, and also the, I take the last paragraph, when you talk about, when you talked about the partial dissent of Commissioner David Cash, now, I don't know if that's ever happened, so, I mean, that's truly significant. So, for all those reasons, I think it would be wise for us to at least begin the process. It's going to cost a lot of money, a lot of capital, but, you know, in the long term, it may be in the best interest of the community.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Brian?
Yeah, I, I think, Jerry, you're right. You know, obviously, we've talked about it. In fact, I think my file... I think you've got a, probably the same memo to each of us as chairperson.
I think I have, yeah.
You know, outlining the process to go forward on, on taking the water company over. So, I think the best argument you make on it is timing, and, and the fact that, you know, you have the financial information now, so that would probably help reduce the, the consultant's costs, because a lot of the information is there, so now you're just talking about evaluation. So, I, I would be supportive of that article, because, you know, it's another step in the process, so depending upon what that report comes back, then a, then a determination could be made to go forward or not. But, you know, I know, obviously, the water company is, has had their problems, but, you know, I, I do have to say that I have seen an improvement with Dave Condry as the manager. I think he's making some strong efforts to try to right a lot of wrongs in the past, and I feel a heck of a lot more comfortable with him at the helm than, than with things that have happened in the past. But in terms of the article going forward, I think timing is the key, and that's the best argument. The information is there, it's fresh, so let's evaluate it.
Yeah. One point I'd like to make that I, I didn't make, and I should have, so that people can understand what we're talking about. You know, if you remember the analysis that I've put out over the years, what can make this work, and this is part of what experts will look at, is the ability to borrow the capital that we need to acquire the water, and it's going to be very expensive.
Sure.
I mean, the starting point is really your rate base, which is about $33 million.
Right.
But because of the way the water company and the, the system is structured, the water company, as a private company, pays a lot of expenses, a lot of things that we, as a municipality, would not, starting with income taxes, return to investors, other things, very, very large amounts. So, what can make this work in the ideal situation is within the existing rates, now recently approved. When you eliminate those things that we wouldn't have to pay, the goal would be that, then that remaining money becomes the money that we would use to borrow the amount of money to acquire the water company. In other words, to do it within the existing rates without a rate increase. That's what, that's one of the keys we want to look at.
Agreed.
And there is, there's a lot of flexibility in return to investors, it's like $1.9 million or something like that. There's amortizations of rate case expense, there's federal income taxes, there's state taxes. We'd also have to consider the offset of real estate taxes, but when you do all that, there's probably, believe it or not, several, several million dollars per year available to us to pay debt on a borrowing to acquire the company, and that, that might work.
Yeah, no doubt after this rate case that there's, clearly, the water company is going to be able to maintain that water company and do it within the existing rate structure. With the things that you've talked about, I, I don't know why the town wouldn't, but I think that's for a different time. But I, but you, I'm glad you, you set those parameters, because it's important. There's an awful lot of money going into that water company, and, you know, for my purpose, one of the reasons why I would be in favor of seeing that article go forward is, is the lack of trust. I think the, the water company lost trust, the trust of the community. I think it has to do more with the most senior levels of management and the culture that they have and created. I don't know how much of that Mr. Condry is going to be able to overcome, if any, but certainly they lost the faith of this community, and it's not just the E. coli event. It's their response to it, the DEP consent orders, and then ultimately, when I read your, your briefs and read the conclusion in that report, the DPU agreed that there weren't arms-linked transactions that were happening within White family companies, and that's significant, and those are monies that the town doesn't have to pay out, as you, as you aptly pointed out. So, I think there's a lot of potential, a lot of opportunity. That doesn't mean the numbers will come back the way we would like, and it could be that the, the town may look at it and say, it's not the thing we want to do, but at least we're responding, I think, to ourselves and our own thought process to get this looked at. And I also think we're responding to our constituents, because I think there's a great deal of constituency base out there that believes they should be able to go to somebody, and not a monopoly or a separate company, but their, their community, their government, and they ought to be able to ask for accountability, and they're not able to do that today. And for that, their corporate governance ought to relook at, because right now, the, the community doesn't feel they're accountable to them. So, please.
Chad, I think you said there are only four private companies in the state?
I think there's about four or so of similar size. There are a lot of small ones. They're very tiny, I mean, small, and sometimes down to 200 customers. But in terms of ones of Milford's size, there's Whitensville, which is also owned by the company.
Weight company.
Aquarian, which has Hall and Hingham, and there are a couple of others of around that size, so just a handful of around this size, and again, a number of tiny ones. You know, you went back 100 years, and virtually every community had a private water company, but over the last 100-plus years, particularly in the first part of the 20th century, most of those were acquired by municipalities. For whatever reason, Milford, Hingham, Hall, and a few others weren't, but most were. Most absorbed them over the years.
Want a motion? Motion? Do we start the process?
Well, I, I think, there's not a vote yet, because the motion isn't devised, but did you?
Yeah.
We haven't had, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, there'll be a town meeting.
Yeah, there'll be a town meeting to vote.
Yeah, what you'll, when you put the warrant together, that'll be one of the...
Clearly, you have a consensus here to go forward, but let's look at the article and see where we go.
Okay. Good.
Good job.
All right. Thank you.
I know you would have liked it to be much less as well.
I, yeah, absolutely.
You pay it as well as...
You would. I pay it. I pay it like everybody else, but again, I'm very pleased with the result.
Okay. Thank you, Jerry. Now, we'll go to the Milford Youth Center one-day license request.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
All right, the request is for Friday, October 25th, 8:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m., Milford Youth Center Gymnasium for Music, Dancing, and Appetizers. Doesn't say the actual event function, but I'm sure it'll be a good time had by all. There's a second, and I also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Next, we have TGI Friday Request to Post a Sign.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I have to tell you, I'm confused. In my nearly nine years as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I can't remember a sign request coming to the board. So, I have to ask, why is this sign request coming to the board versus going to the planning function? Is it a legal sign? Does it meet the requirements of zoning? I'm not sure this is... I, I don't get it. So, I'd like to remand to planning to let them look at signs and approve signs and make sure, because I'm, I'm just not into the sign bylaws, and it would take me a fair amount of time to come up to speed on it, especially when I get what, what is essentially, it looks like a, I don't know, fourth-gary drawing showing me where it's going to be placed.
Again, Vani looked at it, the sign.
What I don't want to do is be in conflict with planning.
Okay.
To say, you know, we approved that sign, but it's not in keeping with our, because I know there's a lot of issues associated with signs. Does this meet our requirements? I don't know. I had to approve one that doesn't, and there's no planning information here.
Well, we have a memo from Vani, which is what we'd always done. Mike Santoro had always given us memos. I remember we put signs down by Burger King. I mean, whenever a sign comes in, she's got the...
So, we got town engineer?
Of the, she's got the layout of the right away.
I thought signs were approved by the planning board, though.
Yes, I thought.
I don't think so.
Town engineer approves all signs?
I, I think this board does, on town land, this board approves signs.
This is on town land, yeah.
On town-owned land. If, if, if a business is coming in, you know, gas station, they have to meet the, the sign requirements on their business through the site plan with the planning board, but if someone wants to put a, a sign on town-owned land, this is what we've done, and typically, we've gotten the opinion of the police chief and the town engineer.
So, so planning reviews all signs except those placed on public land?
I, I, planning would deal with a sign as part of a development project. If someone wants to put a sign on town-owned land, it's this board that decides that, because we're the custodian of the town-owned land.
I'm, I'm okay going any way this board would like, but I'd like to have the planning board review this first.
Okay, go ahead. But we have the town engineer reviewing it.
I understand, but planning's reviewing...
Police chief did weigh in also.
I understand.
And the police chief reviewed it also. So, I would, I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Yeah, I'd like to, like, like this, okay, Bill, I'll, I'll go to the planning board, see what happens.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, trustees for Vernon Grove Cemetery looking to expend some funds from the Avis Pond bequest.
Motion.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. That's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is council age, council on agings Request to Fill an Application, and their recommendation is Martha Andriano.
Yeah, I make a motion for Marsha Andriano.
Seconded.
I'd vote in favor. That's unanimous. Next, regretfully, we have two, two resignations, two very hard-working people who helped this community navigate through difficult financial decisions and also environmental decisions, and specifically, I'll go over the resignation by John Kelly of the FinCom.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
To accept with regret. And the next one is Mr. Sean Riley.
Motion.
Who's...
Seconded.